Honorable Father and Son. Honorable Richard Valiant. Honorable Ezekiel Rodriguez. Honorable Nita Sanlana Lao. Honorable Greta Tansina Glada. Honorable Alcorro Gerades. Honorable Victoriano Conibi. Honorable Naiati Bugasan. Honorable Giorgio Ridioli Ordinario Gattuso. Honorable Nerey Napi Pagando. Honorable Jason Ray Sisbito. Madam Society in episode 26 members. Presenting the political forum.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am honorable Rosasenya, it's Rosasenya. So representative of Pardinal. So we'll be giving you an advanced Christmas gift. Just a introduction to the new product of Pardinal. Pardinal last September. We call it good noon fresh kataba. So this is the product for the competitive forces. It's the product. Pardinal is doing cream since it started. But it in a volume around 20 kilos or 200 kilos up to 1,000 kilos. So now it is 2,000 one bringing the product right. You see po sa likod. Meron pong nakalagay na product. So this is I am from the other middle states in Vietnam. So this is the first time po. First time nagdala ang pakete na product. The product. This is bringing the product right to the society. That first is in the Philippines and we're planning also. Nagkikita we go to export. So potentially so we're thinking next year we're doubling our targets volumes. Now is 150,000 kilos it will double to 100,000. And the opportunity of employment is for raising now is 451,000 product next year. Hopefully the team of the parliament will support us. Books point will support us in this new venture.
Thank you. Population of this new product, how many employees are? Are half? They are.
Currently we have 240 in the direct Pardinal employees and 749 from the back.
Almost 1,000? If I can check, I will. Item number four, the item of the session. Do not see your hand. For the reading and consideration in this hour of session.
We are now on item number four, the reading and consideration of the minutes of the previous session. And this is the 170 regular session held on November 25th. Yes, actually yes. Anything for addressed area should be at the private side of the officer. Ayun po doon at the kitchen. Sir, sir. Magtiting po lang announcement. Hi, announcement. And wanting to regularly. So sir, sir. Pero doon po sa resoluciona la propa. So may I tell you? Po kapado? Po maaseng po siya. Ah, may may. Pero siya na po dito. Palaspari ng. Ah, sir. Ah, okay. Siyo po. Ah. Si po si Pardinal na ako ngayon. For this, siya mo sa senior three. Do you have to read the question, Chair today? Yeah. Po na ako siya. In the temporary video po yung aking. Motion was said. I respectfully read the question, Chair, for our resident. Nawala rin. Kasi ang mga rato lang, ayun po. Ang gitna magpapili. Si po na po. May ka, may kasi ako di pa rin. And I will read the question, Chair, or help us.
Si po na yung items na move. With the difference. Yung mga resolutions to achieve what is assigned.
Oh.
Except the assignment. Thank you, our senior leader. And to item number five. Perpetual. How do you back up sorry? Maybe a benefit or clarification. May regard to. The minutes of the previous session. If there are no more questions, any motion or.
I think the more I mean from the. Uh, that's I think I know that the minutes of the regular session. That's November 9th.
It's Councilor Haniya.
Thank you, Madam. Before the. I remember that this was like that. And specifically also read the mission. The. The project. As we have a sponsor. The resolutions of. Aral na.
Okay. Thank you.
I think my associate. Um, the patient. Hospital. This is the. Item during the. School. Two issues, I think. Dream that. Dream that period. The. Besides, if it's time. The. Nakalila. As a Philippines. Di ba para di na yun na passing, di na halin. Na very efficient sa akin. To give way the sponsorship of this two issues. Si ni na naman. Sa Philippines.
Madam Chair. Consider request. Amendment based application that line number 17. You can read as follows. Counselor Ketchum verified that if special permit for top 50. If the request is for an amendment for the special permit for top 50. There is no need for an amendment as it's a procedure for approval. And instead to be directly endorsed to the San Juan Yon Fire. Say please want to. Get the. Amendment. Mention by Counselor Ketchum. Arida. Any other recommendation for amendment? You just need some motion for approval of this. Motion. Senior.
And more for the approval of the action of. Minutes of the regulation concerning San Juan Fire. That's the time maybe 10.
Any objection? Here again, let me know. The minutes of the 170 regular session. And one of the. Madam Chair, of this administration, your request from the service of the nation. As its chairman, the deputy general. Giving order of business and permission to this. Through the service of the nation. A day for the days. I have asked you to pay the power of your governance. Thanks. He can send it through the passenger. SP members. Kaya lang din sa ano. Yung bigay nila, yun lang din. Kaya nga natin ina want to stay. Kaya nga natin ina want to stay, di ba? Para Monday, China. Then yung bigay na sa akin. Eh, agad Justin sila. Eh, agad lupa rin.
And sir, po pwede kireng mayong si Rami. Si pa yung mga. Number four yung mga. Uh, two years. Uh, brandy na. Janicari. Nagaling po sa. Ba't. Para. Kaya ni po para. Ma-ressocial. The tourism area po. Kina mananin. Ma-ressocial. Harap po may nasa pati. May class. Nagawa po mensang puwes. Rati ina doon na repo yung. Grandes bigay. Po sa tito ng system. Wala na. Natala. Yung mga. Bigay na po. Uh, maprubay na man.
Madam Chair, item number five.
Madam Chair.
Senior three.
Sorry, pero wala po. It po ay may naman. Sa. It's inside. Uh, ang. Sa. Yung mga. Yung mga.
Magandang maramo po. Uh, ganun na. Dito pangunu. Uh, may dibo sa. Membro na ating pong. Prosepo. Ang aking pong. Uh, nice na ipanating. Uh, sa pamitan ko na representasyon ito. If po ay may ka na yan. Unpo sa relocation site. Sa Chichimacatua, nanre sa asa. Uh. Uh, mga reupates ko doon ay may mga ilang. Uh, inaing na kaya pong pinarating. Na sa mga. Saking talaga ay. Parin po tayo ng. Kulay para po tayo paratingin sa kinahulog. Uh, sitwasyon po ng relocation site sa Chichimacatua. Binibigyan ng ating kala pamanahan ay. Nakapakot na po sa pa. Sa pamitan ang concrete post of the bar wire. Ating pong pag-auna was nakakapakot na yung upang. Uh, makita na na. Ating kala pamanahan yung kapuan ng routine na kanyang binigay. And sa madaling salita, ito po ay para nagkaroon na relocation survey. Para makita kung saan yung nagkanta. Which is it po ay maganda. Pero ang inaing po na rin mga reupates doon. Dahil po meron kina yung. Uh, gipo. O posit. Na. Doon po naging dalin yung mga ligit tubig nila ng mga reupates. Ang problema lang po kung sinongat ay pupas doon sa relocation site. Sa madaling salita dahil pinagot po ito ng bar wire. At nakap concrete post. Yung pong source ng tubig kung saan gula tatawas. Subidigay ay nasa labas. At medyo. Tahirapan po sa kanila. Kasi kailangan nilang subot sa numbering sa bar wire. At yung mga senior citizens. Medyo di napugal pa-please po lang paggalawang ganyang katawan. May mga sumasabing po yung ulo. At may mga nasugatan sa pa. At natunayan po ay meron pong isang reupates doon. Na talagang. Narangailangan ang medical attention doon sa kanya. Sugat sa pa dahil sa pagkasabing doon doon sa bar wire. So ang nice po na representasyon ito. Uh, ganun na. Ay matawakan ang pansin po ang opisina ng Miss Padlang ng Niti Lepin Opis. Ayun po sa mga reupates. Ang nag. Saguap po na pagbabago na nagka doon ay mulabo. Sa bisina ng MPDO. So kung may kunin na lang Chair, ayusnan po natin. Uh, may parating sa MPDO. At kung kailangan pong hinipat yung. Uh, gipo na yun na source po ng maraming mga pagpay ng ito ay. Yung ano ng paraan. Dahil nga po. Uh, medyo nahihirapan. Si Dan, bukod sa medyo. Uh, malayo at nasa labas ng bako. Ay gip po litas pagkabing. Nasusot doon sa mga bar wire. Yung naman po at ang laking salamat.
Imbit natin ang pagawa sa system of the office. Next regular session at. Then din na kayo. Kasi yung. Konsent, kailangan nila gayos po. Para hindi na sila. Perpetual. Madam po, I do the question hour. O dahil naman tayo. Please thank the Keros.
Item number one, local expenditure program for CY 2025 of the barangay. At sa arin mo. Amount due to be measured at 69,881 pesos. Alert. This is the item from item two to. Item seven. Alert from the municipal mayor requesting for the approval of. MDC resolution number 2054 thus 25. 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30. 55 for the municipal nutrition action plan. 26. Local climate change action plan 57. Public service 15 energy plant 28. Local disaster risk reduction planning plan. 29 containment systems. And 30 LDR. Number eight, alert from the municipal mayor requesting for the appropriate action on the request of. Oskar and Pidau on the proposed ordinance establishing grievance mechanism for. Senior citizens and persons with disabilities in the municipal group's plan providing for the provision. Of grievance committee and for other purposes. Number nine, alert from the municipal mayor requesting for appropriate action on the request of barangay. Imolnon for deal with classification of barangays from agricultural to commercial. Or institutional with block numbers 894 thus C. PLAs thus 96 and certified thus. Meron po dito. Mga sulat galing po sa ating ano mayor. Respectfully requesting this number for appropriate action on the request of MSWDO as follows. Republic Act number 11648. Number two, Republic Act number 11596. Saiin po po yung. Item po. Republic Act number 11648 and up promoting for stronger protection against rape and sexual exploitation and abuse. Number two, Republic Act number 11596 and up prohibiting the practice of child marriage and imposing penalties for violations. Republic Act number 849 and up regulating facing and other forms of discrimination rights. And fraternities, sororities and other organizations and providing penalties therefore. Republic Act number 11930 and up punishing online sexual abuse. Of exploitation of children penalizing the production distribution possession and access of child sexual abuse. Republic Act number 11. 11862 and up strengthening policies on anti trafficking in persons providing penalties for violations. And appropriating funds therefore amending for the purpose. Republic Act number 9. amended. Republic Act number 11222. And up allowing the certification of simulated birth records and prescribing administrative adoption proceedings for the purpose. Public Act number 111, 11148 and up scaling up the national and local health demonstration programs. Through spread and integrated strategy for maternal, neonatal, child health and nutrition doctors. 1,000 days of life appropriating funds for other purposes. Public Act number 11313. And up defining gender-based sexual harassment and歧视. Public spaces, online workplaces and educational or training institutions. Public Act number 10666 and up providing the safety of children aboard motor cycle. Public Act number 100630. And up strengthening the juvenile justice system in the Philippines amending for that purpose. Public Act number 9344 and reverse on at the juvenile justice and prefer act of 2006. Public Act number 211. CO37 and up institutionalizing a national feeding program for under nervous children. Public care kindergarten and skeleton schools to combat hunger and under treatment among Filipino children. And appropriating funds therefore. Sign municipal mayor. Is there a possibility? Saan, municipal mayor, isari ang ganda ng mga. Another communication from the municipal mayor respectfully requesting the ESB member for appropriate action on the request of MSWDO about Jose and C. Seing, Chel Plan CY 2024, 2026. Another proposed measure request from councillor Saragat Gipnabu for first meeting. And solution requesting the honorable municipal mayor to allocate funds for the construction of mini overcoach at a mass elementary school. Number one, Mayor.
Madam Chair. In absence of our, of the chairman of the committee on transportation, which is the angit community, uh, for the, uh, for, for the regard regarding the chairman. Uh, this is to inform the, the joint committees of goods and transportation as adopted in public attitude issue and the system of our, uh, the chair for us to stand up the public meeting first before we. This is for the second reading. Ano sa'yo? Councillor, ano di?
Uh, darama sa'yo madam Chair, may po 'yung mga report ng kanina, ano ba pero bawal na rata sa'yo. O po ay, uh, unay, doon po sa ligtas position po na barangay side. Nang parang, yun po sa agricultural, uh, po po sa industrial or industrial. Um, ito po ay, nang tagal na pong nakareport eh. At naranong ko ng kumiti, hininga ka po 'yung ito. At, uh, naging, um, naging, may may, at may pumilitin po ng kumiti ang nakaraan. At po ay may kinakailangan, uh, repartments. Maninaw po sa kumiti na reclassification na iingit ng agricultural and two ng agricultural, 'yan po ay 41 to 620 ng local government po. Uh, and reinforced by the, by the memorandum circular of the Department of the Food to number 26-22. Uh, sinasabi pong, uh, sinasabi pong ni Blas, uh, memorandum circular 26-22. Ang classification po ay, uh, ano pa, ay kailangan po ng isang ordinance na ipapas, ano dinas reclassifying portion of a seat, uh, da. Pero po, uh, meron pong mga repartments. Uh, isa po sa mga nagre-repartments, ito po ay namin pinagpapakasama emero ng muntis po na natin po sa amin kong trainings at muntis na pag reclassification po ay, kailangan meron pong DAR certification na natin ated or whatever, uh, ano pong mga, uh, imo grand na talaga uh, brandy mago recognition. At, uh, isa po sa mga repartments ay 'yung DJ certification na 'yung lupa mo rin reclassify mula sa agricultural, mula sa, ano pang gamit na agricultural siya ganito, papunta siya sa commercial, and meron pong certification po, DAR, ABRAM, A. At naiintindihan po, uh, 'yung ito pong ordensy neto dahil 'yung pera na nadamitin ang bayan dito sa lupa na ito para gawin barangay side ay magandali po sa amin. Kailangan po, ang hatingdaman po, 'yung kung dalawang repartments na naman dito ay verify na taas, pero kung sakat na natin for the sake of ordensy ay kung anman po ang decision na ang bati ay po ay, ito sa'yo. Decision di, uh, bati. Uh, 'yung pong, uh, comments yon, iba po yon, naiintindihan ng kumiti. Ang comments yon po ay exclusive authorities at end natin ng adapt na repartment or na reform, 41 to 665 of Republic Act 5567. At maninaw po talaga na reclassification po ang, uh, ang ating kong tinangusapan at 'yun po 'yung repartments. At, um, Madam Chair, ita, dahil meron pong sulat ang ating gilsigi, certified urgent. Um, ito, kung sakat na po ng bati, yun po 'yung situation na sila yun, inahabol yon.
Uh, kung inaalaga po rin tayo, inagroba na, may way or yun dun sa request ng Portuguese family po.
Well, Madam Chair, ngang sa'yo po yon, 'yung iba po, nadinigan pa's ordinance po, dami po 'yung nihihinin tayo po 'yung, 'yung dalawang document. So if ever po, ito ay papas na natin, uh, can you for that in the other place?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I appreciate the explanation of our feeling, uh, answer lately, but then uh, may I request a copy of the memorandum circular that he has just explained to us? And I request po a ten minute break for us to search on the, uh, matter, Madam Chair. Uh, it is, uh, my job to, uh, to to vouch for the master's request that the Madam Chair is submitting to the president. Kasi or, or, sa, uh, certified by the, certified by the DAR, or, yon. Kasi madre pati tayo, may tawag ang sa'yo ang bayan for the reclassification of, uh, the five days.
Pag the first class of three thousand five days, ano po 'yung mga, ano po 'yung any or sir?
Madam Chair. Since, uh, may di na po 'yung sign, may may ask for our secretary for our researcher to please, ano po, search for the IRA or the local government po, or baka po may local government po. Nakakailangan, baka meron talaga dito, pagka. Uh, baka po may mga hindi na po ako na sama na mga ayaw ng sa'yo, ba't nila lang po pagkakaintindi? Pero pong dalawang situation, nga po sa'yo po, ang isa lupa ay pwede po natin magreclassify. Dito po sa section 20 na binabangon na mga mga mga, ay una, when the land ceases to be economically feasible and sound for other cultural purposes as determined by the department of agriculture. Ang pangalawang situation, ay where the land siya have substantial greater economic value presidential, commercial, industrial purposes as determined by the someone who may concern. Madam Chair, 'yung memorandum circular po na binabangon na mga kasi may concern na memorandum circular number 26 po, uh, issue the year 2022 is a fourth is an enabling memorandum circular for the first situation indicated, Madam Chair. And also the percentage, there is a device for you, Madam Chair, that the reclassification po the, uh, siya is limited to only 10% of the, uh, total land, it is not key land the area of the, uh, property, but then land area of the, um, supply and need, Madam Chair. Uh, so with that, Madam Chair, uh, gusto po pong manamay kung tamak po ba, ano po po pagkakaintindi? At, uh, para magiging po na mapahadap, um, nilerquest po na ano, bayan tayo, then four idea.
Thank you, uh, Councillor Crouch, I agree with you with the interpretation of that, uh, section of the local government code of reclassification. It does according to each land title, but it refers to the whole area of a certain barangay or disti pan. So I believe that there is no prohibition for us if we decide to reclassify the portion of, uh, um, Madam Verdi's property and, and imulat, uh, to be reclassified as commercial or residential. Commercial, uh, so we will not violate any law.
Yes, Councillor.
Uh, it's a beauty, but, uh, uh, declaration, uh, po ay, uh, I would say, uh, I should be, uh, without, uh, declaration. Uh, at this party, special education, please, uh, without that. And, um, 'yung, uh, isang ating po kasi, aside from the declaration, uh, the, uh, the isa pong, uh, source person, talaga po may emasage niya, sa'yo. Pag natin, ay gali, uh, kung dalawang, uh, kung determination namin na pwede po ng mga niya may mapertaming, pinakayahan na, uh, declassification na may na, may na, uh, ina pa sa original niyang dami. So nila natin yon, i require para nagniisip. Kasi 'yung determination na lang sa mga niya bayan, as, uh, described nito sa, uh, yon to. So, okay na po yon. At ako ay naki-ditioned, natinupoy niya, hindi yon, ikulo, hindi yon, uh, loob isang lalit dito ang pagkukulat na, at least 10%, kundi ang pinakukulat niya, ay pakuha ang agricultural area doon sa barangay na yon at least sa 11% dahil, okay na po yon, hindi yon determination. So, uh, kasi pag tayo po ay naprotake, same, 'yung, uh, kapang mga, ay, ay, magkain doon, pag tayo, uh, sa'yo. And, um, 'yung, uh, ano tawag dito? At hindi na po, hindi pa po nang balas po dito, nila natin i-require?
O, hindi na natin i-require, kasi wala naman tayong konti na sa, ang nagsasabi na bago tayo magreclassify, kailangan po may mga ganito requirements. Eh, sinusulat lang natin kung ano na sa loob ang gawin. Okay, um, may I suggest the motion for the approval of this request? Councillor, with that.
Uh, Madam Chair, kasi di po di, uh, motion po niya subal. Uh, 'yung maya rin po ng tips po kasi ay si Mr. Swardi. So dapat ang na-derivist po, ang derivist ni Batty, siya po mismo. Kasi kung hindi po siya yun na-derivist, hindi na nga, siya may, may tao na, may na ESP. At sa, hindi ko rin po, pero, kasi sa, magandang na natin ay, uh, si, si, sa, Jesus. Siguro ipakalintang na natin 'yung requesting talaga dito pa si Kapitan Naejo ay 'yung middle request for the reclassification, yun maya rin ang gusto para may napag-ESP.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. With respect to our councillor, uh, with our big here, Madam Chair, I believe there is more requirement that should be aware of the property who, uh, will, uh, request for the reclassification, Madam Chair. I believe, uh, the currents or, uh, follow me, uh, that will very, uh, good to this requirement. Since this, uh, personally, po, is the over of the property on the request of, uh, matter.
Okay, but, uh, can we, if we just take into consideration, that this is being, no, okay, or like consideration? Actually, this is human body, has to be, so reclassify, whether the land, like, 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 request from the, uh, from the, uh, from the, uh, from the, uh. If you have a question, Councillor, with that. Uh, yeah, I'm just asking, do we need to, to, uh, pass a resolution or a, for, for the I.
Okay, if, if, uh, dapat tayo na, uh, uh, the request of, uh, uh, ay po, yun, uh, apokal, uh, 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 request yun yun, uh, the expiration of, uh, of the cultural land, uh, from the last time, uh, uh, 894, uh, there is 56. So this is, uh, Councillor, right there.
Any question or any objection for clarification? Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, if I can, nicely, uh, uh, maybe, Chair, uh, if I can, uh, uh, but maybe, if I can, uh, Chair, uh, all of the members, uh, uh, so the members of the, uh, 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 uh?
Uh, 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 again, this 196, from agriculture, uh, commercial, you see, why I put it that way? Only second, uh, uh? Next? That is, uh, uh?
Madam Chair, here are the members of your request that thank you so much for the perspective. About the, of, large, uh, reservation, and, uh, some big part, uh, of the later, uh, move in a, move, uh, make a common motion for, uh, its adoption. Five measures, Madam Chair. First is the resolution approving and adopting the Municipal Education Action Plan. And this, uh, action plan is presented to us as an MDC member by, uh, Madam Lorraine Adlo, uh, indicating, uh, explaining to us, uh, some diversity, the plan of our local government for the year 2025 to 2027. And may I also inform our committee here that one of the, um, major problem of our downstairs house that are standard group of, uh, children, po, 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 sa, um, gumimo po sa, uh, niti. At marami po po mga action na mga ayaw po po, mapiging aswasyo para sa, uh, mga, uh? Uh, I am now ready for the interpretation, Madam Chair. There'd be, uh, Madam Chair, the representation, back to, uh, move for the adoption in omnibus, uh, minor, Madam Chair, the five MDC reservations, approving the virus plans for the year 255 and the others, 255 to 27, respectively.
Any objection? Here, uh, we have both, uh, 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 uh.
Madam Chair, I would like to request that the members of the group of groups be, be to offer of these measures. Another measure, Madam Chair, is the resolution approving the progress programming of the local disaster risk reduction and management fund uh, for, for calendar year 254 from virus programs, projects, activities amounting to 692, 251,500 to procure for the deployment of Brooks Point Emergency Response Unit Rescue, uh, which we approve for its, uh, uh, move out between those, uh, different organizations and our local chief executive. And the utilization of this fund was comprehensively discussed to us by Mr. Boz last, uh, MDC, uh, quote, uh?
Okay, Madam Chair? Uh, we are, uh, in progress. The president, uh, 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 uh.
Madam Chair, another measure, uh, this is being requested, uh, by the local chief executive. And this, this with regards to the data processing and non-disclosure agreement beginning with Department of Agriculture Regional Field Office, 4D, and LGU's points for the development of the registries system for basic sectors in agriculture. And this is not, it was not certified as urgent, but the local chief executive of every, Madam Chair, is required to be something, and that's 30% of cover. And this needs, uh, be considered as soon as possible. So this will be beneficial to our partners. And the, this representation is open for interpretation, should you wish to know the obligations of different partners.
Here's your request for urgency, any objection? Not, we can, uh, simply be the blue one, uh, Madam Chair.
This representation like, like a sponsor, a resolution, granting legislative authority to our local chief executive, under what is Sara Benito Junior, uh, for in between the Department of Agriculture Regional Field Office, 4D, and, uh, for the development of the registry system for basic sectors in agriculture, or, uh, as he is saying.
Okay, Madam Chair? Here, uh, 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 uh.
Marami sila. And again, Madam Chair, this measure is called, that I have sponsored, uh, the request that the members of the committee need to offer this measure. Good morning, everyone. Uh, the latest ones from five measures, the third, the, uh, cultural services, that we're doing, we're not sounding on one of that. And if our, if we're to decide this, right, by our, uh, uh, uh? And I'll make it with the final statement, Chair. First measure, Republic Act 10620, Act 10, meaning to ban trust system for Philippines, amended meaning for the purpose, RA 944, otherwise known as Sumera Justice and Welfare Act of 2016, Act of 1994, RA 1131, and Acts defining gender-based education for gas and industries, public spaces, online workplace, education, or training institutions, providing protective measures and prescribing penalties therefore. RA 1162, June 2022, and, and Acts strengthening the policies on anti-trafficking persons, providing penalty for violations and appropriate consequences for amendment for the purpose. RA 908, as amended, otherwise known as the Anti-Trafficking Persons Act of 2030 and other expressions was. RA 11930, an act punishing online sexual abuse or exploitation of children, penalizing their production, distribution, possession, and access of the child sexual abuse or exploitation material. Amending RA 9160, otherwise known as Anti-Money Laundering Act of 2001, as amended, uh, 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 Act of 2009. RA 8049, an act greatly increasing other forms of initiation rights and federated sororities in other organizations and providing, uh, 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 uh. RA 11596, an act prohibiting practice of child marriage and imposing penalties for violations thereof. RA 11648, an act promoting for stronger protection against rape, sexual, and rapeation, and abuse, increasing the age for determining the condition of statutory rape, amending for the purpose. Acts of fully qualified as amended, otherwise known as the revised penalty, RA 853, also known as the Anti-Rate Law of 997, and Republic Act number 76, as amended, otherwise known as the Special Protection of Children Against Abuse, Exploitation, and Discrimination Act. These are, uh, measures for Madam Chair for adoption. And I can give, deciding the fourth, uh, SGLG request, if I now, if I may, uh?
Madam Chair, Councilor? Uh, this is recent, uh, my representation, just few years ago. When we adopt the, uh, national law, and it penalizes certain violations of the law, pa-uncle, and it, of course, legally by our, uh, 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 and the penalty law, susunod po ba natin sa penalty, uh, as provided for in the national law? Or, tayo po ay, uh, valid?
Uh, since you are, uh, two to the side, uh, 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 they are, uh, very, uh, 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 uh. Twenty second, any pressure, recognition? There'd be, uh, 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 uh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And that is the last first request, ten, five minutes, uh, 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 certified as urgent by our, uh, 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 uh? Respectfully submitting, uh, on the sexual abuse and exploitation of children and the Anti-Child Sexual Abuse or Exploitation Act, uh, 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 Action Plan for calendar year 2024, up to 2026.
Twenty second, any objection? And there is no, uh, 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 uh.
Uh, good morning, all of the chairs, Madam Samaan. Uh, I have here, uh, the, uh, the public, uh, the public consent. Uh, Republic Act number 1127 and 1140, uh, 1127, by the, uh, Act relaxing an accident safety program. But after, nor is the chief there, the public meeting their, uh, their agenda and the legislature is good to, of my armor and under the official of law would be to feel that a great success for, and support. And, uh, scaling up the national and local registered official program to strengthen, degrade the status for, but there are, in the, uh, start of the official and the first part of one, piece of life, most strict and support, most well and well others.
Second, any objection? There being that, then we also approve those, uh, questions. Like second and finally. Counselor Riccardo.
Madam Chair, the point of this side, is akong ordinary, sa naming ang akin po ng ating lokal na, uh, pamahalaan, through our local chief executive, ang pagestable sa'ko ng isang advanced mechanism. Ang mga sa'yo ng ating mga PWDs, ang ating mga senior citizens, ay magkakaroon ko ng pangamaraan na, uh, makapagharin ko ng kanila replamo at magugunan ko mismo ng merong sistema at proseso at sa'ko, uh, board. At, para ko ito sa pagpaprotekta ng kanila kong makalabatan, as provided for by you. At hinikiko ko ito na masipotahan ng mga kasamahan na ito ay maconsider na sa iyong session. I move for urgency, Madam Chair.
Any objection? More for the first question, Madam Chair. Go this.
There is a draft, Madam Chair. Um, with our, uh, presided officer and my complete side of here, a draft ordinance establishing a grievance mechanism for senior citizens and persons with disabilities in the municipality of Uspoy, providing for the creation of a grievance committee and for other purposes. The stated points of this ordinance is for the creation of the PWD and senior citizens grievance group. And the grievance committee, uh, is established to address and resolve grievance filed by senior citizens and people of interest. And this will be composed by the municipal mayor as the chairperson, the MSWTO as the vice chairperson, the municipal head officer as a member, senior citizens affairs office head, the PWD affairs office head, a representative from representative senior citizens organization, and a representative from representative PWD organization. This is to, their function is to receive and review of things filed by senior citizens, investigate the validity of grievances, ensure times and transparent resolution from case, to submit and add to report to the municipal mayor of the number and types of grievances, receive application and resolutions. There is no penal provisions, Madam Chair. And may hold the, uh, this representation would like to introduce a minor amendment. This is to add the, uh, vegan, our early president as member of the committee, to what I have been told about.
The component is now already recorded, Madam Chair. Any question for clarification? Or, Madam Counselor, nakalino. If you can, I can hear it. Okay, through well of that. But then.
Uh, our presided officer, very respected, please. This is to, uh, move for the approval of the ordinance establishing a grievance mechanism for senior citizens and persons with disabilities in the municipality of Uspoy, providing for the creation of a grievance committee and for other purposes, per second reading, Madam Chair.
Here, Madam Chair. This will be, uh, establishing, we have, we have, in the sense and persons with disabilities is, is why we're doing this point and finding the creation, all the grievance and for other purposes.
Madam Chair, I also request that the members of the committee on rules be made as a vote to offer of these arguments. And also, Madam Chair, to, um, calendar for it's approval and refer to the index regular search. Marami sila.
Next. No more.
Another two measures requested by the local chief executive for as a requirement for the SGLG, as mentioned by Counselor Cyrus, sir, for example. An act providing for the safety of children aboard motorcycles and, um, an act allowing the ratification of simulated birth records and prescribing administrative adoption proceedings for the purpose. Uh, this representation will let through for the omnibus approval of these four measures for its, uh, adoption in the planning, Madam Chair.
Any second, any objection? Here, Madam Chair, you also approved, uh, those two measures mentioned by. That's enough. Next, any more? Resolutions and ordinances for a very brief announcement.
Yung gusto kong sumali sa Kristina, ng, um, takot na nasa. Kaso, uh, the, uh, case, uh, Kristina. Yung gusto kong sumali sa atin na lahat, mayroon din sa atin sa Kristina. Kristina. Gusto ko iti sa'yo. Hindi, meron talaga, um, pero we prepare tayo ng limang gifts. Walang, walang minimum na regalo, wala ni maksimum na regalo. Para kung ano lang ang gusto mong iligan, mahal man 'yan, kurang man 'yan. Pero meron tayo, limang represerve, nagyak sa atin, monito, at monita, monita. Yung first, uh, something that starts with the first letter of your monitas name, ang monitos serenay. Pangalawa, something naughty. Uh, oh, something that reminds you of your monita, monito. Tapos, another, uh, something that is hard and edible. Tapos sa December 16th, 17th, ang ating Christmas party. Pero tayo na din tayo sa hatag, mga gano'ng makalimog travel. Kalindil, eh, just din eh, paralayo. Wala, wala. So, yung ating, ano, ay na, ay ating, Christmas party and at the same time, yung recognition na ng ating mga, um, matatag na. Kasi kung lahat po ay sa atin, ipakaprepare ko na kung ano 'yung para makapagunang matay. Sa'yo tayo. Ako na session na tayo. Paano mo absen?
Sa'yo po sa SKE. Ang ibig ko sa'yo po sa'yo.
I choose of your monita, or monito. For something that is hard and edible. Tapos, yung final gift natin sa December 17th. Okay, sige. Yung, yung, tapos po. Every Friday po 'yung ating bigayan, sa, sa pangstart tayo ngayong Thursday or Friday. Something that starts with the first letter of your monitas serenay.
Saturday, Thursday, okay, Thursday, Thursday.
Oo, kasi baka mira ko 'yung serenay eh, no?
Thursday.
Okay, sige.
Hindi sure tagal, oo.
Hindi sure tagal, oo. Okay, tapos, sana 'yung tayo bibigay 'yung gift, kasi para hindi makita. Napaklaybox tayo na regal na 'yun.
Kada napakapais, man, kung, kung tayo na bibigay, 'yung ganang, pati nga ng trap.
Oo.
Nasa, 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 nasa.
Diyan na lang kami bibigay sa inyo, 'yung regalo. May box lang, may box sa dropbox.
One, uh, we both acknowledge that our very good essential is now reached at the end.